And it is 9:39. Let's go ahead and get to our 9:30 a.m. item, 6.2. Presentation of the Lake County Recreation Center feasibility study, Phase One, and B consideration of county financial participation for Phase Two of the study. Director Ewing, good morning.
All right. Good morning, Board. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. We've come to the Board a couple of times on this topic, but for the purposes of just background, about two years ago, a group of, around the county, a group that consisted of the City of Lakeport, Lakeport Unified School District, Hope Rising, and the county, some representatives from the county, started discussions about a possible, at the time it was a possibility of a pool in the general Lakeport area. That conversation and really the focus of that group shifted throughout the years and it expanded to include the City of Clearlake and a consideration for something beyond, you know, just a pool, to start looking at a broader community recreation center. In February of this year, we came to the Board to approve a cost-sharing agreement between the two cities and the county to start Phase One of this feasibility study to evaluate what would the community recreation center or recreation centers, plural, what would it look like? We felt that it was important to really do a thorough professional study to evaluate what the needs are, you know, some cost estimates and see where we can go, how we might, how we might be arranged organizationally to support that. So in February, your Board approved $20,000 share of the initial phase of a feasibility study. The funding for that came from an internal cannabis grant, which we submitted and your Board approved. At the time that cost-sharing agreement was approved, we indicated that the Phase One, the $20,000 share that I just mentioned, Phase One would be authorized, but Phase Two would not be authorized, nor would our funding commitment be committed until Phase One was completed and your Board had an opportunity to hear the presentation of findings. So that's where we are right now. And I'm joined by Brian Whitmore with Studio W Architects. They were the firm, he was the principal of the firm, along with some other subconsultants that completed the study. They were selected by, went out by the City of Lakeport in coordination with that same team, and RFP and Studio W Architects was the selected firm. So Brian is here to present, you know, the summary of Phase One, and I think it's just important to note that the Phase Two has been, well, Phase One has been heard by both of the cities. Brian has given this presentation, or at least a modified version, focused potentially on those two cities. But he has provided those to the two cities, and it's now your Board's opportunity to hear it and then consider moving ahead with Phase Two. Phase Two is also approved through the cannabis grant at a cost of $31,000. That's the county's share of the total $92,000 for Phase Two. So at this point, I'd like to hand it over to Brian. Brian, I believe you have the ability to control the screen, so I'll turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, Lars. Good morning. I'm Brian Whitmore. I am the President and CEO of Studio W Architects. I've got a presentation that I'll load here in just a moment. Lars, I'm going to ask you though, both Mike Shalitow and Dennis Berkshire are in the waiting room as part of the Zoom. I don't know if there's a way that we can allow them to come in and also be speakers. I can certainly cover their material, but to have them here, I think, would be advantageous as well, so.
I think that being done as you're talking, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Let me go ahead and share my screen. Can you guys see that okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. All right. Well, while I get a moment here to set up, I'd like Mike Shalitow and also Dennis Berkshire to introduce themselves, if they wouldn't mind doing that real quickly.
And you're muted still. If you can unmute.
Hi, I'm Mike Shalitow. I'm with the team with Studio W Architects, ostensibly as an operational consultant. I retired from the City of Roseville in 2010 as city manager, but I spent most of my career there as assistant city manager and the Parks and Recreation Director. And while with the City of Roseville, we operated, built and operated several facilities similar to those being contemplated with this project. Since retiring about 11 years ago, I worked with about two dozen agencies on operational analysis, strategic plans, and similar types of feasibility studies for recreation and aquatic centers. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
And good morning, everybody. Hi, I'm Dennis Berkshire with Aquatic Design Group. I'm President and Principal at Aquatic Design Group. We're an architectural engineering firm that specializes in public swimming pools, recreational water. We were founded in 1984, and we've completed more than 4,000 public sector projects across the United States, working in 42 states and 24 countries. We're fortunate to design probably close to 70% of all the public, large public swimming pool projects in California, and have done a fair amount of projects from Santa Rosa to Redding to Yuba City, throughout the Northern California area. Brian?
Thank you, guys. And then just very briefly, Studio W Architects, we are an architecture and planning firm. We work all over the state of California, from Humboldt County all the way down to Orange County. We have offices in Sacramento, San Jose, and Irvine. We do a number of public projects, primarily education, but also recreation, commercial, primarily about 90% of our revenue is with public folks all throughout the state, so cities, counties, public school districts, other public entities, recreational park districts, and so forth. And many of the projects we start with are based on this sort of feasibility study. So we're very excited today to present. I'm going to go through very quickly the agenda. We're going to have a high-level presentation of the report that we put together for Phase One. As was pointed out earlier, our services have been divvied up into a Phase One and a Phase Two service. We'll talk about the purpose and the process of Phase One here in a moment. We'll identify Lake County Recreation Task Force members. These are the partners that we've identified through this process that I think have a potential of partnering with you, either financially or operationally. We'll go through an overview of the program, as was described to us, and what we gleaned from the task force in terms of the type of programmatic features that this community is looking for, both in terms of recreation and aquatics. We did put together as part of this Phase One study some capital cost estimates and cost recovery trends as it relates to the maintenance, ongoing maintenance and operation of facilities of this kind. We also looked at management structure opportunities, funding opportunities, project location opportunities, and at the end, we'll talk to you about the next steps. So the purpose of the Phase One study, as is probably well aware, is really to explore the feasibility of the recreation and/or aquatic centers in Lake County. As was mentioned earlier, there's kind of differing interests depending on where you go throughout the county, certain areas of the lake, a lot of support certainly for this, and we've seen that in the presentations that we've made with the cities here in the past month. Generally speaking, there is an interest in terms of both recreation and aquatics, and maybe varying levels of both, depending on where you go. So it's our goal as part of both Phase One and Phase Two to identify, is it feasible? And if so, what are the resources that you have available to put it together? We want to identify the marketability of the facility, so essentially its need, identify the programmatic features to start to establish potential costs and cost recovery, and then identify management structure, funding, and location opportunities. Phase One is really more about observations, not so much recommendations, so you'll see more observations, more gathering of information in Phase One. The goal is that a lot of that would filter through into Phase Two, such that we can make some more pointed recommendations to the cities and to the county at the end of the Phase Two study. The process began on March 24th of 2021. We held regular meetings with the Lake County Recreation Task Force. We facilitated site tours of some of the possible location opportunities within the county on April 13th, and we've scheduled presentations, as was mentioned. We presented to the City of Clearlake on July 15th, the City of Lakeport last week on August 3rd, and today, of course, the County of Lake on August 10th. As far as the task force is concerned, and who we identified as the partners in your community, obviously the local government agencies, yourselves at Lake County, the City of Lakeport, the City of Clearlake, but also Lake County Office of Education potentially has a stake in this, certainly as an educational facility. What we find in communities like yours throughout the state is that local school districts oftentimes have a stake in this sort of thing. One of the projects that we have a lot of experience in, this ongoing right now, and I'll reference to these presentations, the City of Sacramento's North Natomas Aquatic Center and Community Center, which was a project that started in 2014, very much like your own, with the idea of feasibility study inevitably led the city to make the determination to move forward on a 50-meter Olympic-sized pool, a 25-yard lap pool, along with the community center and other elements. That was a partnership between the City of Sacramento and Tomas Unified School District. So we see the school district partnering in many ways with the potential for the school districts, but also the community colleges locally to partner with these sorts of folks, either through their own bonding capacity or other maintenance and operational type of agreements, and we'll talk about some of those agreements here in a moment. Obviously, here's, look, local school districts include Lakeport, Conacti, Upper Lake. We've looked at Mendocino College and also Woodland Community College as potential partners. Local community organizations, there are a number of them. Generally speaking, the theme with all of these folks is that they have some sort of engagement with wellness, whether that be wellness in terms of physical wellness or mental wellness. And these are a number of folks that we've identified that are either already part of the task force or recommend to be part of the task force. That included first five of Lake County, the Lake Family Resource Center, the Lake County Channel Cats is the primary swim group in the area, has a lot of interest, obviously, in the aquatics program, Hope Rising, the Westside Park Committee, which is part of the Lakeport, Westside Park area, and the Redwood Community Services area. Healthcare providers oftentimes have a stake or have an interest in participating in these types of programs, again, for the physical health of the recreation center and the potential for things like health and rejuvenation when it comes to aquatics. So you have a number of healthcare providers locally that are active in the community center, health, Adventist Health, and also tribal health. One of the additional resources that you have that is unique to your region is the fact that you also have a number of local tribes, and I think that there is the potential for interest from the local tribes in getting involved in this process, and again, participating perhaps at some financial level. These are the local tribes that were identified, and we've listed them. Generally speaking, they haven't been part of the task force, but there would be a desire, I think, to reach out and try to nail down what the potential of partnership might look like, if any of them were interested in the near future. So one of the things we started out with was program, really trying to identify, again, programmatically, what is it that the community is looking for in terms of both recreation and pool? And so this is a culmination of a lot of the task force meetings and the interest of different groups and individuals that participated in the task force in terms of what they might want to see in terms of an actual rec center. So generally speaking, it's based on a multi-use court of some kind, probably an 84-by-50-foot basketball court with cross courts, both volleyball and basketball use. The idea of potentially racquetball courts, cardio weights area, training rooms, a number of small training rooms for things like yoga, Pilates, other types of fitness types of programs, maybe some sort of game area or multi-generational area. There's definitely an interest to gain interest from both elderly folks and young people alike to participate in a facility of this kind, obviously supporting spaces like restrooms, locker rooms, custodial, storage equipment, and the general circulation. So at a high level, we're looking at the potential of maybe a 15,000-square-foot facility of some kind. So that really gave us an indication of what sort of size-wise do we need in terms of land, if there's a reuse of space, you know, what sort of physical space might be needed for that purpose. Likewise, we went through a number of different options, four options as it related to the potential of the pool. This was the first option, first conceptual option that Dennis and his team had put together, which is the idea of a 4,800-square-foot pool featuring a 75-foot-long by 45-wide lap area in a teaching peninsula. The idea that there would be the combination of both competition and also learning, learn to swim, that sort of thing. Obviously, in the area that we're dealing with here in Lake County, there's a huge desire to have swim lessons, and certainly being with proximity to the lake, the desire to teach children to swim at early ages, you know, maybe beyond, say, other communities. This example is shown here at the City of Patterson, and so gives a good idea of both the size and the costs associated here in a moment with this type of a pool. In each case, we're looking at maybe two bodies of water, so a pool for both competition and learn-to-swim, and the potential, I'll say, also recreation, but also the potential of a spray ground, so some sort of playground-type, smaller children-type of activity pool as well. The sizes of the pool dictate the bathhouse and support buildings, the pool deck areas, and so you can see just how much footage or acreage we would need to support a pool option of this kind. The second option was a larger facility, maybe 5,700-square-foot pool featuring a 75-foot-long by 75-foot-wide lap area for 10 lanes. Gauche Park in Yuba City has a very similar-sized pool. Again, because of the size, we increased the size of bathhouse and support building, pool deck area, along with that per code. While this is great for competition, it doesn't lend itself maybe as well to some of the learning opportunities. And so the next option here, option three, is the option that we featured as part of that North Natomas Aquatics and Community Center I mentioned earlier with the City of Sacramento, where by size, it's roughly the same size, but instead of 10 laps, we have nine laps, and we have this full-length stair area there on the end, which is really great for young swimmers, those learning to swim, lessons, those kinds of things that make for a very sort of strong activity pool, not just a competition pool. And then a final option here, the smallest of which would be the potential of the 3,500, roughly, square foots pool featuring 75-foot-long by 45-foot-wide lap area for probably more like six lanes, and the Mayfair Park Pool in San Jose is a good example. Dennis, would you like to add anything as it relates to these options and again, some of the feedback that we received from the task force?
Sure. Thank you, Brian. So when we look at these pools and various options, we wanted to be cognizant of not only what are the capital costs, what are the site requirements for this, but also how's this going to affect operations, programming, and support community services for the next 20 to 30 years? So when we looked at these various options, part of these are taking a look at, for example, the image that we're looking at here, this six-lane pool that can support a small swim team. It also concerns swim lessons, it can serve recreation swim, all on kind of a minimum scale. But this also starts to get into, how do we create perhaps an area that might be more of a regional park, where we can start talking about operating cost recoveries that Mike Shalitow will get into in detail here? But all of these things are kind of an overlay in terms of the programs, the levels of service, what it's going to cost to build, and what's it going to do to affect our operating for the next, as I said, 20 to 30 years? Brian?
So as I mentioned earlier, each one of these options also included the idea of a spray ground. Again, this is shown in Mayfair Park in San Jose. So again, looking at multi-generational use of this aquatics facility, not just for competition and for learning, but also for the potential play and activity. The site area, the total site area, and the parking necessary for each one of these facilities is also dictated a bit by the size of the facility and also the size of the pools and the pool deck area. And so we had a variety of different options there, showing the parking and then the ultimate areas needed. So by and large, we put together a very high-level capital cost estimate on each of these. This is really just a unit per square foot cost at this level, lump sums associated with the site and the site infrastructure, assuming that something like this might be built from the ground up. We include contingency at roughly 10%. We looked at escalation, which we are still very much realizing even in the pandemic, at about 4% per year for three years. And then what we call soft costs, being all of the ancillary costs along with hard construction costs of design, testing, inspection, agency approval, all of these things, at roughly an industry standard, about 25%. What you'll see in each of these options is a total estimated cost, somewhere around $21 to $22 million, assuming that 15,000-square-foot facility with pools and pool decks and parking areas of these size ground up, bringing site utilities to the site, is about what you would expect to stand over, let's say, if the facility was built in the next three years. Maybe sticker shock, maybe something that we say, wow, that's too much. But again, the purpose of this feasibility study is really to identify the potential there and then be able to sort of back in or back out of if there are targets of costs that we want to look at. Again, option three and option four, option four being the smallest in total cost. We also developed a cost of just the recreation center by itself, and this was really as a result of the City of Clearlake, that has a stronger interest, quite honestly, in doing a recreation center by itself and not necessarily an aquatic center. So you can see the potential cost there, closer to around $12 million, somewhere in that ballpark, total project cost for a facility of that kind. I'm going to turn it over to Mike Shalitow here in a moment. We went through a variety of options as it related to cost recovery trends, not just capital cost expenditures, but what might the possibility look like of ongoing sort of annualized costs and revenue potential based on sort of similar-sized facilities in the state of California? So Mike, you want to jump in?
Yeah, thanks, Brian. I, you know, I think one of the concerns on the part of both cities and the county itself was the operating costs of both pools and the centers. Because this is a high-level issue, we really just looked at some benchmarks of existing facilities that were similar in the program, although all the ones that we looked at were frankly bigger than a 15,000-square-foot building. And so you can see that the potential cost recovery of a facility with the program that was developed for this project can actually do fairly well in terms of cost recovery. The smallest is the facility I'm most familiar with is the Roseville Sports Center. It's about 23,000 square feet, has gym, fitness equipment, dance, exercise room, meeting rooms, common areas, all that. That facility's around 23,000 and currently runs around an 87% cost recovery. The rest of the facilities are somewhat bigger, albeit some include a pool, like the Mill Valley Community Center and Pool, Incline Village up in Tahoe area, and the CB Star Community Center Pool, or a combination of pools, and all of those are indoor pools that are associated with the project. The CB Star facility is a little bit unique in that it was built by the Mendocino Coast Recreation and Park District, and then it has a partnership with the City of Fort Bragg that ended up passing a tax override issue to help support the annual operation. You can see the subsidy from Fort Bragg is around $1 million a year. So, you know, one of the, I think, one of the mistakes sometimes agencies get into if they have enough money to build something, but they haven't really contemplated how they're going to operate it. And that's true for both recreation centers and pools. So that's, you know, the, of the cost recovery, that's the least revenue generating facility. But if you look at the averages, you can see that it's not unusual for cities, that these programs are recovering around 78%. I think it's important to note the program for the building really is essential, and all of these facilities aren't, these are really designed to generate income, so either through day duties or monthly dues or even annual assets, the residents can use other programs they operate, whether their personal training or classes or camps are really designed to be fee-based. This isn't a traditional community center with rentable meeting rooms for receptions and those type of things, it's really designed to be a drop-in recreation, activity-use-based center. And so also in the report, we've looked at different operating models. I think, Brian, we'll touch on that in a minute.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we jump into that? But I just want to point out as well, as Mike mentioned, that, you know, what we're looking at here, depending on the program ultimately that's formed, and certainly as part of Phase Two, is that we would expect to start to see, you know, cost recovery in line, and the average here, 70, 80%, somewhere in that ballpark. And then depending on the size, obviously, and what we would identify as potential expenses and revenues, you know, maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in terms of funding subsidy over time. As you can see, I mean, some of the more affluent areas, Incline Village, and others much higher, so we want to consider certainly, you know, your community, what your community can bear in terms of costs, you know, ticket prices, entry fees, those kinds of things, what sort of special types of functions might they have?
Brian, I might point out one other slight difference, but this is true for all the centers. All of these centers that we're looking at have, well, not all, but most all have gym space, a basketball court. And so in addition to the daily use fees or monthly uses, those facilities are used for youth sports, adult sports, that those programs may live somewhere else in the recreation department that runs them. It's not really part of that direct cost recovery, but it does provide a use. All of these facilities have daily use fees as opposed to a private health club, so that people can drop in and use it, they're open to everyone. And some uses of the facilities, gyms in particular, can be used for large community events, crap feeds, those kind of things as well. So I just wanted to point that out on a rental basis.
Yep. Mike, you want to jump in and talk about management structures?
Yeah, I think one of the things, given the nature of the requests for proposals or the feasibility study we're doing for the jurisdictions in Lake County, we looked at what are some other jurisdictions that runs? We kind of walked through some typical models. The top one that you see is the joint development, this is the Roseville Sports Center, the Roseville Aquatics Complex, that's adjacent to a local high school, Wood Creek High School in Roseville. This is a joint development. The North Natomas Aquatic Center, typically, in this case, the school district contributed around $1.2 million towards construction, as well as some additional funding for ball fields and those things that are in the adjacent park site. And also, the school district provides money for annual ongoing operation to subsidize the operation. In the joint use agreement, typically, the landowner is the lead agency, and in this case, it's the City of Roseville, that the land is on a park site adjacent to the high school. But we also did a joint use agreement where the land was, we built a pool on school property where it was, the city contributed towards the school district. And the agreement covers annual operating cost and then ongoing capital cost for big-ticket replacement items. At some point, if you had to replaster the pool or buy new equipment, then there's a cost-sharing methodology with that. The other project, because I worked with the City of Agouria Hills in Calabasas in Southern California, they actually formed a joint powers authority to build this community center. This is again a fitness center, and you can see some other pictures in the, in the report itself, that has gym, fitness, climbing walls, multipurpose meeting rooms, this actually has a teen center inside. The JPA model really creates a separate entity as its own government agency, in this case, between the two cities. The JPA also is formed where there's a board of directors that is comprised of council members from each of the respective cities, as well as some citizens at large between Agouria Hills and Calabasas. Each of those cities contribute about $100,000 a year towards the operation of that facility. Additionally, funding came from the cities themselves, as well as they were able to get some state funding from the state of California to build the center. The third I mentioned a little bit about, the Mendocino Coast Recreation and Park District. CB Star Community Center and Spath Aquatic Center is just a large, well-done facility, and they were fortunate in Mendocino and in the, the facilities actually in Fort Bragg, they had a sizable contribution from a donation from two different benefactors. But once they started operating it, they developed an operating agreement with the City of Fort Bragg. Actually, although it sits on the Mendocino Coast Recreation Park District property in the City of Fort Bragg, part of the agreement is that the technical owner of the built facility is the City of Fort Bragg, and they contribute to the annual operating cost towards that facility. And then the last is, one of the things we were asked to look at is creating a special recreation recreation and park district. This is a picture of the Truckee Donner Community Center and Pool Complex. In Truckee, Truckee Donner is a special district that serves the town of Truckee. It serves some unincorporated areas as well as Tahoe Donner, which is a large homeowner association in the area. And this facility was built solely really by the Truckee Donner Recreation and Park District. They did some, had some funding. They went out for a bond issue a couple of times and was narrowly defeated, but they eventually ended up with enough money to build the facility. And although I don't use it in the benchmark, it has a very robust cost recovery as well, similar to the, at least in line with the averages.
So one of the things we also did was look at potential for funding of these facilities and the type of funding that's generally available. We divvy this up into two categories currently are reasonably available and then other potential sources that could be available in the future. This is probably the, the one missing piece that I think is part of phase two, potentially we want to focus on more, is where are the opportunities for funding? One of the things that we had with the North Natomas Aquatic Center project, which as I mentioned, is now under construction, be finished here in October, is about a $40 million facility, is we had a champion of that facility at, at the city level and that was the councilwoman who was responsible for that district, District One in the city of Sacramento. She really identified the opportunities, made the push for general funding from the city and other opportunities that made that happen. And I think that's something that we would want to consider both at the county level and potentially also the cities is who is that champion? What are the funding mechanisms that we want to start to consider as we start to isolate the potential cost? General funds obviously exist at all entities, some in higher amounts, some in less. We know that those funds are precious and so recognizing that, of course, there's, there's a large argument that needs to be made to position general funds for these kinds of facilities. We understand at the county level, there is some Quimby, state grants, both the Lake County and also local school districts. For example, at the local school district level, Prop 51, which was the last state grant is pretty much all spoken for. We do anticipate, fortunately, they did have a state grant back in March of last year, which did not pass, but there is another state grant being positioned, at least for local school districts in 2022. Some of the local districts that may have leveraged their own bond funds may be being paid back through state grants and have the ability to then move some of that state grant money into other pots. Neighboring housing development funds, certainly the city of Clear Lake has the potential for some of this and is looking at this as it relates to their Burns Valley development. Local district bonds, we understand that there may be even some promises made from Lakeport USD in the past about their local bond, but both Lakeport and Conocti at least have some funding left on local bonds in the past, may potentially look at bond and capacity in the future. Remaining Rescue Act funds, Conocti Unified School District, the potential for property or asset sale. We understand Lakeport Unified has some property they may look at leveraging to contribute to this source. Other potential sources, tax assessments, development funding, state bond funding through Prop 68, federal funding potentially through the American Recovery Act, the JPA funding, this was mentioned earlier in the management structures by Mike, potential of beating land, certainly donations or one-time funding. And, and it was also mentioned here locally, the potential cannabis industry related funding as well. A project location opportunity. So we looked at a number of different location potentials, primarily on either the western shore there in the Lakeport area or on the east shore, the city of Clear Lake. We looked at site selection criteria and part of that criteria is really defined by the fact that synergies exist between communities, community run programs such as athletic facilities, senior centers, libraries, other types of facilities, along with recreation and aquatics. And so the potential for there to be a proximity, for example, to a community park was something that was very much a pro when we looked at potential site locations. Ideas such as shared parking. An aquatic center, for example, may ramp up on a weekend when they have a special event for swimming, but might not need as much parking during the week when another type of facility might need parking. So the ability to share parking and not expend the capital cost of building it, where the use patterns are complementary to one another is something we consider. A co-location, as I mentioned earlier, libraries, centers, schools, pools is very positive. And then place making principles. And so some of the things such as sociability, comfort, sort of the general image of the place, access to mass transit or to arterial streets for easy access, the highway, for example, for easy access is something we looked at as well. So possible locations included the West Shore Swimming Pool, Quail Run Fitness Center, which is a pre-existing modernization opportunity, the West Side Community Park, and also the Burns Valley Park Development. When we look at the Burns Valley Park Development, for example, this product here is something that the city is looking, city of Clear Lake in this case is looking forward to moving forward on pretty quickly. And so what they're doing is they're going through the process of a master plan. Now they've engaged some civil engineers and landscape architects to begin the process of layout and they are looking at identifying, at least as part of the master plan, the ability for a, a recreational center, not necessarily aquatic center at this location. So this is an area that's already designated as park. Many synergies exist with some of the areas around it. There are some ground up, obviously, costs that we know of that, that we're forced to deal with in this particular case, but generally speaking, it's a great opportunity for them. If I go back and I apologize because I used the wrong slides here, I had slides on the West Shore Swimming Pool, Quail Run and West Side, which I shared with Lakeport, and I meant to have them in here. The West Shore Swimming Pool is the old swimming pool facility is part of the Lakeport High School area, Clear Lake High School. That is a defunct facility. It's a facility that has not been operational for many years. There's not a lot to save there or reuse. It's got some challenges when it comes to ADA access to that area and we all recognize that from a findability standpoint, just to locate that facility from sort of major thoroughfares through sort of the west side of town, that it's difficult to, to get there. There are some synergies, obviously, with parking with the school facility, but we did recognize there are challenges associated with bringing adults to the high school property and also the, the middle school and elementary schools that are also co-located there as opposed to saying building the facility where then you bring students to that facility. The Quail Run Fitness Center, I think, is a very interesting opportunity. It's a pre-existing facility. It's about the size that programmatically one would need to build. The pool is a little bit smaller than what we would generally say we would want to see programmatically for this type of use. So we'd probably rebuild the pool shell, the pool deck area, those sorts of things. But it has parking, it's very proximate to the West Side Community Park facility. And so there is some capital costs that you can save by utilizing a pre-existing facility, renovating it for the purposes of that use, really depends on the cost at which maybe that fitness center could be obtained. And, but by virtue of the fact that it's very close to the West Side Community Park, there's an opportunity there for pedestrian connections and again, some of the synergies we mentioned with the athletic facilities, along with that pool and that fitness center. The West Side Community Park itself is a master planned facility, much like the Burns Valley Park Development. It has a phase three area off to the west that currently has not been developed. It's a very flat area. It's a very buildable area, has utilities in the street. There would be some changes that the city of Lakeport would need to make in terms of looking at that area for the purposes of a recreation and or aquatic center, but it has a lot of synergies again between some of the other athletics and the other parking areas that are located there. And so that's probably one of the more optimal locations. We also looked at a number of different things, an old key mark shopping center in Cleveland, Lakeport, some of the other retail centers, his potential reuse opportunities. The challenge is there, of course, is the synergies are much different. We don't have some of the other community elements nearby and at the same time, some of the costs involved in really changing that use become cost prohibitive as you go through the feasibility of those types of developments. So when we look at recommendations moving forward, one of the things that we would focus on if the opportunity arises to move into phase two is to facilitate a more pointed strategic market analysis, putting surveys out, conducting social media outreach to really see what is the program that's, that's interesting to this community? What are they looking to gain out of these types of facilities? We've had a lot of very positive public comment that had come from both the city presentations at Lakeport and also Clear Lake noting that people travel, you know, many miles outside of the county to seek recreation, to seek aquatics, to have swim needs, other kinds of things. We think the need is there, but we want to sort of use some market analysis to refine further that program. The program is defined right now as really as a result of the task force members and their input. Narrowing down both the location and the funding opportunities. So really sort of getting away from things like perhaps the West Shore Pool that maybe don't make as much sense, other sort of retail locations that maybe are not well positioned, really probably focusing on those areas where we think that most synergies exist, maybe the West Side Community Park, maybe the potential for the Quail Run Fitness Center as a reuse and certainly Burns Valley for just the recreation center. And then try to focus on the funding opportunities, what funding exists, at least between the three entities that are partnered here and maybe other entities to really identify how might that move forward. And then in marking on phase two, that would include a conceptual layout design of the facility, a more pointed capital cost estimate and operational analysis based on that and then being able to finalize the report to align those two elements. So that is our presentation. I will offer that, like I mentioned before, both the cities, I think, were very positively accepted in terms of this study and this first phase of the report. Lakeport did actually take action to say they would support a phase two. The one comment that we did receive, and this was from the mayor of Lakeport, is that really it was an eye-opening experience looking at the costs. And so some of the discussion that emerged out of that was that maybe Lakeport might be interested more in the aquatics portion and that the city of Clear Lake could cover the recreational portion so that you would have each here in the Lake County community, but in different regions in terms of what they offer. And then finally, a comment came out about the potential of an indoor pool, which is something that we didn't explore, but may have some traction depending on what the interest is of utilizing the facility around. So that's it. Lars, I'll turn it back over to you if there's some things you'd like to share and we'll happy to answer some questions.
All right. Thank you, Brian Michael Dennis. I appreciate the well-done presentation. The only comments I have at the end, just closing, closing marks, I guess, the, the aquatic center in Lakeport, I can just comment as a, as a kid growing up in, in Lakeport, I can, I can remember a, a pool down at Library Park as well as the, the West Shore Pool, the, the, the school pool, as I call it. I, I remember riding my bike with 75 cents in my pocket going down there to swim. So there, there is a, you know, a, a need for that, at least, at least an absence of that here. Two other comments though here, the citizen input, I, I, I think it really should be noted that that's, you know, that's a, a huge piece that, that we have not yet done and, and would still need to be done. We, we, no sense in moving forward without actually hearing, you know, through a, a public outreach campaign and, and that would be a significant part of, of this last phase. And then the last part is some synergies here with, with this study and then you were just right on the, on the precipice of starting a, a county-wide strategic plan for parks or parks master plan. So there's, there's some, I, I think some efficiencies to be gained with combining these two, or at least referencing them through that, that, that park master plan. So I, I appreciate the, you know, the presentation and, you know, look forward to the board's input and then just keep in mind there is an A and a B. The, the B would just be basically staff direction as far as moving forward here. So I'll close it out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the thorough presentation. Let's go ahead and open it up. Supervisor Scott.
Good morning. Thank you for the presentation. I've been fortunate to sit on the task force committee from the beginning. I've missed a, a couple of the last meetings, but I, I believe when we were first talking about doing this study, that we were going to do phase one and then phase two, go on more of a roadshow than what is being done right now and see if we could get more partners in place to pay for phase two. At a minimum, I would really like to see the, the, the school district, Lakeport Unified School District, get on board to help pay for phase two. Is that something that we have discussed as a task force or we were doing or?
Yeah, Supervisor Scott, that, that was my recollection as well. The way we had arranged the, just, just from a budgetary perspective and planning perspective for what our, our cost share would be, it, it was based upon an equal cost share between the, the county and the, and the two cities. But certainly it was always envisioned that, that we would be seeking, requesting and, and soliciting a financial participation from, initially it was, it was from Lakeport School District, to be honest, because that, that was the, the initial focus, but seeing that, that we're looking at a couple of different locations, I, it seems reasonable to me to, to request that. And, and should that come forward, then, then the, the cost sharing would, would be reduced.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Supervisor Price.
Yeah, I really appreciate this presentation. Personally, we have a swimming family and not having access to pools year round is really difficult and there's a whole sector of kids that, that want to swim year round, that want to swim competitively and those needs just haven't been met. And as Lars mentioned, growing up in Lake County, we had more pool options when we were children. So I, I, I think there is a great opportunity to blend this with our master plan that we're working on. The, the, the cost was pretty startling, I'm not going to lie. I think if there's an opportunity to have a facility in each city, it would benefit the entire county, maybe more. You know, neither of these facilities would fall in my district, but it's equal distance to drive to both. So, you know, I, I would appreciate that opportunity to be able to go to both cities to, to use these facilities. So, you know, I do have two channel cats swimming this summer. Their last day was yesterday. So when I look at the outdoor pools, I do have a concern about the seasonal use. Are these three season pools? You know, is there an ability that's not super cost prohibitive to have an indoor pool? Because, you know, we, we have a huge seasonal swing. It's, it's less so in the cities than where I live in the mountains where it snows, but that will impact the use. So that's, I'm, I'm asking about that.
Would you happen to have a answer for that question? The feasibility of indoor to outdoor?
Mike, do you want to jump in and maybe talk about that?
Yeah, again, when I was with the city of Roseville, we built a, actually it's an indoor/outdoor pool in one of our citywide parks. The pool, I wish we had a picture we could grab and show you, but it's an eight lane facility, has a deep end and then a shallow area and the turning lanes as well as a separate teaching pool. When I say it's indoor/outdoor, we built a structure called open air. So it has a retractable roof, so when the weather's good, the roof opens up to let sunshine in. When the weather is inclement, it closes up. There's this, a multipurpose meeting room at the facility, typical lockers, similar to what Brian was suggesting with the, all the pools scenarios, we have a water spray ground. There was a water spray ground that was built adjacent and a big sun deck. So it was built in the citywide park. I recall, so this is probably 10 years old at the time, so there's a big caveat there. When we built the pool 12 years ago, it was around 11 million dollars, including the parking lot. So it's, it is an indoor pool and I think the, that was a suggestion that came up with the city of Lakeport, at least to consider that option. I might point out on a positive note, because I'm familiar, obviously, with the city of Roseville, that particular facility, because it was a, we spent a little bit more money for a, a extensive passive solar, it generally operates in a almost, I don't want to say 100%, but close to 90% to 100% cost recovery. So it's extremely well-used year round for lessons, for fitness, for public swim, for special events, and then swimming lessons are hugely property, are hugely popular there with, lessons are filled year round. So that's certainly an option. Brian and I have actually talked about that and I think if we move forward, that would be a, a, a fifth alternative we might look at as a, as a pool complex. And obviously there's really good data in terms of both cost and operating costs that we could benchmark.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, certainly an indoor pool is, is more expensive to build than an outdoor pool and pool deck. So what you compromise in terms of some of that capital cost, you're, you're looking to take advantage of when it comes to use and then ultimately revenue and then cost recovery. You know, we can You know, we can certainly heat a pool. You could certainly look at operating pool year round, but as Mike and I discussed following the Lakeport presentation is that, you know, unless you're a diehard swimmer, you know, Olympia maybe, or something of that nature, you're probably not going to be swimming, you know, when it's 50 degrees outside, even if the pool is heated, you know, it's really going to limit the use. And so I think it is something to explore in phase two. And I think the market research will probably indicate, you know, where that is. And then we can look at the pros and cons of capital cost versus cap, capital cost recovery, something like that.
Yeah. Oh, I appreciate that because, you know, making this investment is, it's important to me and I, I think it's important to other people and, and being able to utilize the pool for four seasons, I, that has to be a priority. So if there's an option where it can be an indoor, outdoor, or maybe one pool inside and one pool outside, if we're still looking at a two pool option, you know, that, that could work as well.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, thank you for that question because it's one of the things I wanted to ask as well. But in regards to activities for our children to do and families to do, this is a great idea. I'm glad we're working on it. And commonly, you know, the only thing really for our kids in Lake County to do is play sports. So you got, you know, football, you got baseball, you know, you have those and commonly you're in competition with each other, you know? And I'll go back to my childhood. I know Lars brought up his. It's the similar thing. We used to play each other in, in baseball and we were always competing. So this gives you, our kids, a chance to kind of interact socially as well. I know when I would go to the Lakeport Pool, I was able to talk to the kids from the Clear Lake, you know, at high school. And so we were able to kind of get along outside of sports. This gives everybody around the lake a chance to do the same thing, e- e- even in Clear Lake area as well. So I, I like that. It also will limit the, the traffic on Blue Lakes because a lot of people go there to swim. So, you know, just looking at the overall picture and the future potential for this, I think it's a great thing and I support it.
So I have, thank you very much for the presentation. I, I, I have some conflicted thoughts on this. We have a few pools in the area and, and they're nowhere near the level of design that you shared with us. I know that my children have enjoyed going to Middletown Pool quite often. It's not a oversized pool, but it fits the purpose and the need, in my opinion, for that community. I've been up in Cobb where there's a, a couple of different swimming pools to choose from. And again, not large and extensive. And I feel that we're very focused on one specific area. And my conflict comes that it's from an area that passed a $17 million bond, which part of that bond was meant for the pool. And here we are talking about how we're all going to work together to provide more money so we can get them a pool. And it's very directed towards the athletic portion, which is somewhat mixed with school. And I'm, I'm struggling with that situation because everything points to Lakeport in this presentation. In the presentation you gave to us today, you did a very good job of making it Lake County-ish, but in the package on our agenda, it says Lakeport feasibility study on the left-hand corner. And the only other options outside of Lakeport is one that is pretty much dead on arrival for the City of Clear Lake because you know they're not looking to put a swimming pool on that, that piece of land. They've already had it fully designed with a soccer field, baseball fields, Little League and a rec center. And all other potential sites are only in the City of Lakeport. We're ignoring North Shore, we're ignoring Kelseyville, we're ignoring Lower Lake. And I think there's opportunities where we don't need to build a huge, large aquatic center, maybe replicating what's already in existence in Middletown and Cobb because having access to a place to play, in my, in my opinion, provides you the ability to learn to swim, but it doesn't have to be made for a competitive swimming opportunity. And if we focus all $22 million for one area, it's going to be limited who has access to it and it's going to be made for more specific type of activity than providing the opportunity for so many others around our community if we split it up and make smaller little impacts in those communities. That, my, my conflict is the people of Lakeport are paying $60 a year on their property taxes for something that never actually came to be true. And now we're looking to add another $22 million to potentially make this happen. I want to see these things happen, but I feel the focus is based on something that was tried and failed. Can we try and look somewhere else and support other communities that have not gone through the process where we, we, we didn't get what we asked for? I just, I, I'm conflicted by this being, and this was, so this was initiated from the Lakeport Unified School District and Lakeport, and then brought in the whole entire county, but it's still for Lakeport. And so I, I want to see these things happening around the community. There's already pools that exist here in Lakeport. You just mentioned one and one that can possibly be fixed, but there's nothing in some of these other areas. And it, it kind of hurts me that we keep focusing on the same thing again and again from a county perspective. Lakeport should focus on Lakeport, absolutely, 100%. But if we're going to do this from a county perspective, if we're going to go into phase two, can you please, in my opinion, start looking realistically as where we need to do these things and not just stay focused on Lakeport? Because I can't help but feel that we're not being very transparent. This is about creating an aquatic center 100% in Lakeport and not anywhere else. So that, that's, that's my comment. We need these things, but we, we can't just, I don't know. Again, I'm very conflicted with the past history. I don't want that past history to deviate from the opportunities that our children should have, including in the City of Lakeport. But we also need to recognize that some things were approved and not followed through. And, and we keep forgetting about some of the other outlying areas and the unincorporated areas that also require some of those same things. I'd love to see what a smaller scope of a swimming pool looks like and what the cost would be to replicate some of the things we already have. And I'm sure that Supervisor Simon will tell me if I'm wrong, but I feel what happens in Middletown works for the needs of Middletown. I think it's a superb place that I've had to, had the opportunity to enjoy with my family and I would love to see those types of opportunities replicated elsewhere around the county rather than one large facility that happens to end up in Lakeport again.
May I?
Yes.
Thank you. So first, I can offer up my district for a place to meet in the middle. That's perfectly fine with me. But, you know, what we have, our existing pool facilities are extremely aged and I, you know, working closely with pools and pool maintenance and seeing, you know, how difficult it is to work with pools that are decades old. You know, we, we have to look to the future just to start with some, some new infrastructure for pools and we have to build them so that they can work for competitions. We don't have a competitive pool in our county. The Channel Cats have had, are using a historic pool this summer in Cobb that is not open to the public because it can't be this year. So that is the only option for competitive swimming in our county this year. And, and, and we have, and we have a huge amount of children from all over the county that drive all that way just to swim for two months. So we have to have a facility for competitive swimming. And it has to be year round. And so the pools that we have, you know, they don't support that right now. So I hear what you're saying and, and we, you know, you can, you can swim for fun and have swim times during the weekend, on the weekends that are not for competitive lap swimming. Those will work in pools that are designed for competitive lap swimming and for exercise. But you can't go the other way. You can't do what, what the Channel Cats need to do at the Middletown Pool. It's just not designed for it. So we have to look at multi, multi-uses when we look at design.
Supervisor Scott.
You know, Brenda, I'd have to definitely agree with you on the options of places for this pool. I don't think the West Shore Pool that's in place right now should have even been talked about on this feasibility study because the city, the, Lakeport Unified already looked at that and determined that it was not feasible to fix that pool. That's why they, they didn't go in and do that or to rebuild a pool on that property. So, I mean, that's completely out. That, that's not even a property we should be looking at. So I do agree, we need to be looking at different areas that's accessible to our community. If it's a bus stop or, or something there available so our community is able to access this facility.
Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, you know, thank you for the presentation today, but, you know, obviously, yeah, I have my passions obviously about what we do for our youth and our kids as we move forward with things. Whether we start with an aquatic center like's been presented today around it, yeah, we definitely want to look at all around the county because obviously the small pools have their place for us, you know, in Middletown. Love the little pool. And I, I don't know if enough people know that you can also rent the pool and after hours have private, you know, gatherings and other stuff, which is a great thing. You can go through public services to do that. I want to thank Lars. I know he's done that for our community where we rent it, get the insurance. But, you know, you get some private time with the pools too. So there's definitely a need there for it. But my vision's a little bit different. I, you know, you know, my background, obviously I do come from the sporting aspect. I think any complex we're going to build can have the swimming portion, but it needs to tie in more other opportunities, I think, our AAU sports, which all of our kids participate in and travel everywhere. You know, I would like to see any type of feasibility study that we're doing. I would look to bring that tourism here to Lake County, a destination spot for Northern California AAU participating, participating sports. But we still have the challenge of then we need to build the hotel rooms that they can stay and keep them here over the weekend. So it's a long conversation, I think. But looking at this presentation, I do think that we should, you know, I would support going forward with the second phase of it, but I agree with Supervisor Sabatier, Chair Sabatier and Tina that we look at the entire county as we're doing that. Always pushing, you know, we have a large population on the south side of the county. So how do we really get this thing to work together? But for this subject today, you know, I would definitely support moving forward because I want to hear from the community more. We know that there is interest in this, so I just, those are my thoughts on it. We'll support moving forward the second phase, but I think we really need to incorporate it and look at it at a different opportunity just from the swimming pool complex. That's a really neat portion, but tying in the rest of the youth opportunities are there. So that's my thoughts on it. And I'm, and yeah, cost, construction costs, you know, built some large facilities in this county, you know, up to $50 million or so. So construction costs and those types of things are, yeah, shocking when you see them, but finding that right spot, you know, a lot of that stuff we're seeing is that was infrastructure that needs to be put in and other things. And then the long-term costs, operating facilities and be a business owner, you're going to, if you don't put it in the right spot with a private business owner that has a business plan to do it, it's going to be subsidized from the county, the cities and whoever else gets involved with it. And there's no doubt about that. So it needs to be the right partners that we're looking for and the right spots and the ability to drive that revenue so we're not subsidizing it all the time. And, and we all know how challenging it is now with our beautiful parks we have all the way around the lake and other opportunities, how challenging it is to keep those open from vandalism, from other reasons. And we can't even get employees to work our businesses after, you know, the pandemic we're in now and the continuing costs. So got a lot of work to do, but I think it, it's a good start, but it needs to be focused more of a complete county wide opportunity so, and private business owner. That's really the only way I think it can survive in Lake County. That's it.
Thank you. Any further comments before I go back to Director Ewing? He's got his hands up. I think we said something he wants to respond to.
I'll stay, I'll lower my hand here so it doesn't look like I'm, I constantly have raised it. Your, your point is well taken as far as the cities. This was initiated, to be honest, by, you know, Lakeport's School District, the City of Lakeport involved. The county was brought in because there's a recognition of the, of county residents' participation. And, and then we expanded it out of recognition of that to include the, the City of Clear Lake. And, and, you know, it probably did focus on the cities because of the participation of the cities. So expanding into, into phase two, we, we, we weren't looking at every single property around the entirety of the county. That, that would be, you know, overly exhaustive, but certainly an, an expansion of that. But the West Shore Pool, i- i- it was included in there not as a, as a possibility. I think it's probably the best way to say it is, is simply to, to address the fact that that was where a pool once existed and, and, and move on because that, that really did fit a need. That, that pool filled the, the void that is, that is there now. Not, you know, it was not indicated that that would be a, a future location. So I apologize if that, you know, if that indication was, was given, but that was, that was not the intent. That's, that's, I think it's not, not a location that we would be evaluating. Brian, unless that's something that, that, you know, based on, on your, your presentation that you want to amend?
No, I think is, you know, as much as finding the right location is eliminating the wrong locations. And so we recognize that that is probably not one of the optimum locations, you know, in addition to some of the others that we didn't even list.
Thank you very much for that. And without further come, Supervisor Crandall.
And then just thinking about the, the tribal aspect, because there's three tribes in, in my district. And just knowing and discussing with them, I know that the education center from Upper Lake from their tribe and then Robinson, they both have like vehicles to transport kids to wherever they need to go. I know they right now, a lot of times in looking at their schedules, they go, well, pre-COVID, they would go to Coyote Valley, which is over in Mendocino County because they have a pool there. With this intact, I'm pretty sure they would go in county. And I just think that even if it was Clear Lake, it would help the ELM tribe because I know that there's some internal dynamics there. Both tribes could be able to travel there. That's just the overall picture in my head, knowing and speaking with the tribal communities. But, but for me, I, either way, I mean, I, yes, I would like it in my district, but at the same time, whatever's feasible for everybody. I think this is one of those things that we need for kids to have a competition spot, a place for people to go, things to do. And I'd rather have that than fight, or not fight, but just than advocating for it in my district. I just want to be able to have a spot for, for kids to go. So I'm, I'm, I'm open to anything.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. We're going to start in the Zoom room because Jen Hansen has been waiting very patiently with her hand up. So let's start with Jen Hansen. And it looks like you're unmuted, but we're not hearing. Oh, there you are.
Oops. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Sorry. My name is Jennifer Hansen. I'm the president of the Lake County Channel Cats. And I've been on the pool task force from the beginning with Tina and it's, it's been a, a long, exciting road. So I, I want to thank all of you for, for getting us this far. And I started to lower my hand after Jessica spoke because, like she said just about everything I, I wanted to say, so thank you for that. But I do want to reiterate that we are a county wide swim team. That's the reason we're called the Lake County Channel Cats. And I was just glancing at my membership while you guys were talking. We have 200 kids on the team right now that we're teaching lessons to between the ages of two and 18. And a lot of them are from the Clear Lake and the Middletown area. It's not just Lakeport and Kelseyville. We also have quite a few from Upper Lake. So we, we are a county wide swim team. We're competitive and we do service everybody. However, we cannot be competitive in Lake County right now. Jessica is right there too. There is no competitive pool and we falter now competitively where before we were quite strong. I can still think of quite a few kids that are swimming in college right now because the experience they had at West Shore, many of them with full ride swim scholarships. And I'm sad that those are no longer possible because we don't have a competitive pool. I, I think it would be a huge mistake to build a pool that was not competitive. You're going to lose tourism, you're going to lose competitive swim meets. There's going to be thousands of people that would come to Lake County for a competitive meet. Used to happen up at West Shore. I've been involved for 25 years, so I can, I can go on and on about the history of competitive swim meets, but I think it's a big part of, of what we should be looking at. But more so than that is teaching the little ones to swim. Drowning is the number two cause of death amongst children under 18. And it's the reason I'm still involved, even though my kids are, are out of the program. So we have a, we have an obligation toward the kids in Lake County. We have to teach them how to swim. We just have to. And it, every, every kid that would die in that lake that I can see from my house and from the school would be our fault if they, if we didn't offer them lessons. We have to do that. And one other point, Jessica mentioned that we need to have an indoor pool. I ran the high school swim team up until the point that West Shore closed and we swam in an outdoor pool. It, it is done. It is done. Every single high school meet we went to was in an outdoor pool with the exception of Fort Bragg. Kids weren't real happy there because it gets pretty steamy. You only have to heat the water. And we did it. We did it with propane. It is doable. I can't say no to an indoor pool. Don't get me wrong. That would be totally awesome, but if it's cost prohibitive, we can swim year-round in an outdoor pool. We did it for seven successful years.
And your three minutes are up.
I'm sorry, Brenna. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Julie Colfax.
Hello, Julie Colfax here, Lake County Mental Health Advisory Board and Licensed MFT. And I just wanted to, I would feel remiss if I didn't, well, first of all, thank you very much, Board, for having the feasibility study done. I would feel remiss if I didn't point out the mental health benefits and substance abuse prevention benefits of having these kinds of community activities in place for our youth. I know, especially on the Clear Lake side of the lake, that finding things to do for our youth that deter them from substance abuse and from the aggravation of mental health disorders is very, very important as far as keeping our youth stable, giving them outlets for their free time and keeping them involved in their community. And then, of course, that leads to adults who want to bring back to our community. So I just wanted to say thank you all for your efforts with this, and I strongly encourage anything we can do toward promoting more community activities for our youth and our adults. Thank you.
Thank you. Next hand up is Brenna Sullivan. Looks like you unmuted yourself and then muted yourself. There you are.
Good morning, Supervisor. Brenna Sullivan. I'm just speaking as a private citizen today. I wanted to add on to Jen Hansen's comments. I was one of those Channel Cat swimmers that went on to swim in college. I grew up swimming in the West Shore Pool, and I agree with everything she said that a swimming pool in this community is an absolute need. We have a lot of youth that would benefit from a year-round swimming program, from swimming lessons in the summer. And I also agree with the comment that while an indoor pool would be wonderful, the basic requirements are just outdoor pool heated in the winter. It doesn't even have to be heated with that efficient of a system. Spring and summer swimming program would basically be all you would need. A year-round pool would be wonderful, but just getting a competitive pool in the county for the spring, summer, and fall months would be a huge asset in so many ways. So thank you for considering this project and fully support it.
Thank you for your comment. I see no further hands up in the Zoom room for this item. Let's go ahead and go to the boardroom. Please come to the microphone.
I am a Red Cross. I worked in the summers throughout history here as a Red Cross lifeguard and Red Cross swim instructor. I taught swimming this summer on a volunteer basis. I worked at Canockdye, I worked at Middletown. Anyway, I think we need to swim.
If you could please put your mask on.
Joan, oh, sorry.
Then recognize that you put it down.
Joan Moss, yes, I think swimming is very important, a year-round swim program. Quail Run has an indoor pool and outdoor pool. I use both of them. I think I'm very much for a swimming program and swimming pool for everyone in the whole county. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see no further comments in the Zoom room or the boardroom, so let's go ahead and bring it back for any further conversation. Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, I just want to add, we've been talking so much about our youth and the importance for, you know, pool availability for them, but we have our seniors too that could really benefit from being able to do low-impact swimming and aqua size. I actually love aqua size. I do it a lot. I've done it my whole life. It's a really wonderful way to exercise and being in the water is very therapeutic. So, you know, this is a benefit that spans all of our ages in our county. So I wanted to bring that up too.
And I appreciate you bringing that up for the fact that I have thought about the indoor versus outdoor, and if it's outdoor, does that prohibit, in a sense, those that would utilize it for physical therapy or just for the sheer exercise of it? And definitely for seniors, it's a fabulous way to do exercise for the fact that it's so gentle, the type of exercise that you get. Supervisor Crandall?
Just to add on to that statement, you know, physical therapy and whatnot, but also we're looking for partners, I think, in the group, right? Lake County Tribal Health is now opening in Clear Lake or they're building in Clear Lake. And so looking at, I know that they're looking at feasibility for both cities or whatever the case may be, but just recognizing that aspect, the Lake County Tribal Health decided to, you know, they have one in Lakeport, they've had every year, and now they're opening in Clear Lake, and so maybe they would help complement some of the costs. I'm just looking for different ideas, so, but I do think that it would help for that aspect as well. Thank you for bringing that up.
And I do believe that they were listed on the potential for partners on the list earlier that...
I just seen the tribes.
Yeah, no, I think there was all three major healthcare facilities and agencies were listed. I do have a question to the group. It's a question of, and I don't know if it's specifically related to the Phase Two process, but there was some conversation in the package that we received for this item about JPAs. Can we, is that going to be more thought out as far as Phase Two? What is that, what do we require to be able to not only create the programs in the facilities, but also make sure that it's sustainable, what's happening in the facilities, both financially and as far as the workforce? Is that part of Phase Two, or is that a future conversation about what does that look like?
I think that's a good question. We certainly identified the opportunities that exist when it comes to management structures, and I think part of that was as a result of both the county and the cities, you know, asking the question, what exists and what options are there available? I think we can make recommendations of what we think is maybe an optimum way for the counties and where the cities to come together on something, but I think ultimately it's going to have to be, as I mentioned before, a decision that either you Lake County and or in concert with school districts in the other cities, try and identify, you know, who is really apt and who's available to commit and come to the table on that. And then, you know, we're certainly, with our knowledge and experience, can come together and sort of come up with a game plan about how maybe that might be arranged, you know, provide examples of agreements, other kinds of things that would enable that to move forward. You know, hence the reason I mentioned earlier, the idea of the championing of this, you know. I think we will, as part of Phase Two, and I've mentioned this to the team members who have led it from the various cities in the county, of really putting together a focus group that also includes a potential of, you know, maybe one city council member for each of the cities, one or more supervisors that can come together and say, okay, you know, here's what we have available, here's what we think is the best way to go, to give us some feedback, and then we can provide the criteria on which, you know, you can move forward if a JPA, for example, is the way that you would want to proceed.
Okay. And so that'll be a further conversation once we recognize whether or not this is a feasible direction to keep moving forward. So I'll keep my comments on that to myself until further notice. All right. And I believe that Director Ewing, you were looking for direction to keep moving forward into Phase Two. Is that correct? I know you said you had the funding, but looking for direction.
Yes, that's correct. Basically, the next steps, should the board be supportive of moving forward, it would be a cost-sharing agreement similar to what was established for Phase One, working with the two cities to establish that cost-sharing agreement, and with the caveat that we would be seeking out additional participation for that cost-sharing.
Okay. I'm going to pause the meeting for a second. Sam, is it possible to raise the volume a little bit? It's kind of difficult to hear the Zoom sound at this moment in time. Thank you. And so at this moment, I believe that there was consensus to make sure that we look throughout the county for the right place to move forward, rather than being very focused in one location or one or two locations. And I believe that we also have a consensus that we want to move forward into Phase Two, which would move forward with the $31,000, I believe it was, that you were looking for for our portion.
Yes, that's correct. And I would just, maybe, and I see Anita's hand, so I will defer to her, but maybe an up to amount, that, you know, not to exceed the amount that we would participate in, but Anita and then...
Are you asking for up to $31,000, or is that a different number?
Yes, sir, that's what I was recommending.
Okay. And Ms. Grant?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I would suggest that, given the nature of the action, that your board take this action by motion rather than consensus. And also, I'm assuming from this then, the conversation about a maximum up to amount, that the Public Services Director isn't bringing the cost-sharing agreement back to your board?
Oh, absolutely, yes, that would be the next step.
All right, so we'll come back to your board. All right, good. Thank you.
And as soon as I recognize that we were talking money, that yes, we probably should do a motion rather than just consensus that doesn't quite compute.
And even with a maximum, a cost-sharing agreement can have other implications and issues that your board is going to want to be able to see and review.
Okay. Thank you very much. Supervisor Scott?
And with that, I would love to see this presentation be taken to Lakeport Unified School District to see if they will partner with us in this cost-sharing for Phase Two.
Okay. And so without any further pens up, looking for our action today.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve financial participation in Phase Two up to $31,000.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second by Supervisor Pyska.
Okay.
Go call, please.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody, for that presentation. It is 11:01. Let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break, and we will see each other again at 11:11.